Okay, good evening, everyone. Let's call this meeting to order Township of Warminster, the Board of Supervisors for Thursday, April 6, 2023. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please state standing, please, for a moment of silence for... I'm going to mix this up a little bit. Let's please have a moment of silence for all the children in our schools that are being shot randomly, please, thank you. Thanks very much. All right, welcome, everyone. We have some announcements. The board had an executive session where we discussed litigation and personnel issues. I do have... Mr. McKee is on assignment, top-secret assignment, so he won't be able to make it tonight. But I do have some announcements from the Parks and Rec on Mark's behalf. All right, so on April 15th, Tax Day, there's a community yard sale scheduled from 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. at the Warminster Community Park. Register your space at warministerpa.myrec.com. That's warministerpa.myrec.com. The 28th Annual Rubber Ducky Regatta is scheduled for Sunday, May 21st, at Kemper Park. You getting in the water this year, Mike?
Yes, I am.
Excellent, excellent. That's a fun time. The ducks will go on sale at the end of next week. So call 215-443-5428 for more information, and I'm sure we're going to have plenty of chances coming our way. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Yeah, please support that, that's a fun time. Registration is open for the... Hold on. For the Philadelphia Phoenix Ultimate Frisbee Camp, June 26th to June 30th, and July 17th to July 21st. That's a new one on me, but it sounds fun. Facility permit requests, including pavilion rentals, have moved online now, which is a wonderful thing, making it easier for everyone. Visit warministerpa.myrec.com to reserve facilities for your upcoming picnics and parties. And that's all we have from the Parks and Rec. That's all, that's all I have for now. Kath?
I just wanted to say that Janice had mentioned that she was working the egg scramble event, and I didn't want to triple on your thunder here, but my granddaughter was there and at the park, and I heard it was a really good time. So I'll let Janice fill you in. That's all the announcements I have tonight.
Okay, thanks, Kath.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Janice.
To go off of Kathy, it was a great event. It was nice to see people, young and old as well. I got to escort the bunny around, so that was a lot of fun, and posed for pictures and was holding babies. It was great. I enjoyed seeing all the kids out. It was a great turnout. And to see all the... And they had some nice prizes and big blow-up bunnies and everything. It was a lot of fun, and it was nice to see the members of the park and rec board out there as well, working hard. Good day for all, and hope everybody comes out next year when we do it again. And no raindrops fell. That was nice, because last year it was a little wet.
Is that it?
We had a... At the library tent, the campout, the first, first annual library campout. That means they're going to have it every year. With such a success, even in the rain, everyone had a wonderful time. They had... Excuse me. They had all kinds of projects and games and things to go on for children. It was just a lovely time, and around 200 people attended. So that was a great success, and my hats off to the Friends of the Free Library, because it was totally sponsored by the Friends of the Free Library. It didn't cost the taxpayers anything, so thank you for attending. By the way, the library has had a 26% visitor uptick from February to March, which is higher than prior to COVID. So the library's doing some good things, and people are getting excited, and they're coming, they're coming to the events. I want to remind people once more, there's going to be a senior expo on April 20th at the Bucks... Oh, sorry, the Benjamin Wilson Senior Activity Center. And it's from 1:00 to 3:00, and there's going to be all kinds of vendors there to give you information on things that seniors need, and little tchotchkes and things for you to collect, and pens and things like that, and candy probably. But there's also going to be information on reduced tickets for trips and reduced tickets for, for the movies, and information on projects that they have at the Ben Wilson Center for people, so I hope you can all come.
Thanks, Judy. I do have one more announcement. I know we've been working with our fire departments to try to solve the issue of some shortages during the day, and I just want to say that next month, you'll be pleasantly surprised, we're really, really close to getting everything all hammered out, and I think it's a great thing for Warminster. So I'm not going to get into a lot of details now, because we have some more stuff to iron out, but next month we'll have a nice announcement, and hopefully the, both Fire Chiefs and whoever's not actively working can, can be here for that. So, thank you.
Can I mention one more thing, too, off of yours?
Go ahead.
On Wednesday nights, for those of you that are young, 14 and over, that are interested in firefighting, or if you're not sure, I encourage you to come out to the Hartsfield Fire Company, because on Wednesday nights, starting at 6:30, they have a group of young boys and girls, 14 and up, that are learning how to be firefighters. So it's a great opportunity to come out, you get to meet the firefighters, you get to learn new things, and it's a good experience. Come check it out, because you never know, because by the time you're 16, then you can, you're already ready to take the test. So that'll help get some of our younger people in. And parents, I encourage you, if you have 14-year-old children, get them out of, off playing their games and get them out, and then they can meet some new friends, too.
Great, thanks, Janice. So we do have a presentation, and I see our Senator, State Senator Frank Farrey's here, but we seem to be missing our State Rep. Have you seen him, Frank?
I saw him earlier today.
Ah, boy. All right, so can we take a short recess, please? Just a two or three-minute recess.
You're the chairman?
Yes. I was looking that way. Great, thank you. All right. Thanks very much. Pardon us for the short intermission. However, the presentation is for... We've been awarded some additional funding, thanks to Senator Farrey and State Rep Brian Monroe. Brian's not here at the moment, we don't have the check with us, but I just want to let the community know that we've been awarded an additional $600,000 that'll be going towards redevelopment at Shenandoah Woods. So we have Frank Farrey here, Senator Farrey's here, and we also have Jeff Darwick from the Redevelopment Authority, so come on up, guys, and tell us a little bit about it. This is fantastic, this is more good news for, for the park.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman and Board members. You know, it's always great when you can bring money back to the community to make a difference, especially when it's a new community, new in my representation here. I appreciate the time we've had to meet to discuss some of the issues, and, and we met with Tom and some of the staff a few weeks ago as well, so appreciate those opportunities. This funding actually comes from a tax on internet gaming. So when you see all the sports betting on TV and all that sort of stuff, it's legislation we passed several years ago. The tax goes into a local share account, and then it's competitively distributed, so it's really great that we were able to get the funding and bring it back here for the project. So the funding goes to the Redevelopment Authority, and then Jeff can explain the process, but you know, when we first met with you guys, you talked about projects you had outstanding, this was one of the projects you sought funding for, and we were honored to have the opportunity to help you and, and get this money awarded, so you can get the rest of that project cleaned up and, and get, get on to better days there in Shenandoah Woods. So thank you for the opportunity to be here, and we look forward to continue working on projects such as this moving forward.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff. And I know you've had some great news. We've been very successful with our contractor there. It looks great over there. It's a nice job.
First-class contractor, a great team that we have from the township, the contractor and the professionals, so it's been a great experience, a great project, so I hope everybody in the township is happy to see the progress. Thanks to the Senator for securing additional funds. We're going to put that to immediate use as soon as we sign the contract documents, which we're anxiously waiting for, so we can get that money back here to the township. So, yeah, thanks. I just wanted to mention that this is the first ever local share account, stick-like gaming grant around. So congratulations on securing one of the first of these types of grants, and we will continue to pursue additional grants for this project on behalf of the township, so long as we're involved in this project. So hopefully we end up something, with something that everybody in the community is proud of.
Great, thanks, Jeff. And you guys are doing a fantastic job there. You know, the, all the buildings are down, was the contractor, Fritz, I forget his last name.
Banky.
Banky, that's right. They did a fantastic job, the dust suppression, erosion control, I mean, it was, it was fantastic. And now we're going to take the slabs up. I think we're getting ready to start that part?
Very soon.
Right, right, which is, which is great, because now we can employ our engineering staff to come up with a nice design and get our NIPD's permit. That's on the record. And move forward with the, the final, the final plans, where we want to make nice walkways and, and paths and, and make it a passive part of the park. I'm excited, it's, it's been a long time coming, and I want to thank both of you for all your efforts. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Janice.
I don't have a, I don't have a check. Okay, let's move on to land. Yeah, we were, we were hoping Brian would be here with the check to get some photos, but I guess he, I guess he has something pressing to take care of, so anyway, it's, it's fantastic, and both our State Rep and our State Senator were instrumental in getting that, us that grant shovel-ready. We have another million dollars coming from the federal government for the Shenandoah Woods as well. So it's, it's a fantastic opportunity for us, that we don't have to drain our capital budget. These, these funds go directly to the work that we need to get done over there, and it's just, I'm thrilled that we're not exhausting our, our capital funds, and some people are helping us out finally, so, very nice. All right, now we can move on to land use. Public hearings and ordinances. Let's start with the WMA lot line change on Street Road. No?
Yeah, they're not here.
They're not here, either?
I can, we can handle it.
Can we just handle it? You have it on?
Handle it, handle it.
Yeah, let's handle it.
Yeah, it's, it's a small lot line change, the WMA parcel. It's at 105 East Street Road. They're going to move a lot, their line and transfer approximately 1,500 square feet to the owner of the adjacent parcel. Who's the owner of the adjacent parcel?
The Society of Friends.
Yes.
The property's located at 105 East Street Road. Scott indicated it's a half-acre, non-conforming lot, so they needed a variance that was, was holding up after our review quite some time ago. They needed a variance to reduce that, that lot area, because it's under an acre, it's not conforming, remaining non-conforming, and they also proposed no improvements on the property. So they have their variance, they have a review from our office. This is the smallest type of project you can get, it's a lot-line change. Scott prepared a resolution. I'm assuming they had no issues with this, since it's just a memorializing, our review letter, zoning officer's letter, emergency management's, fire marshal's review letter, and then...
Placing new monuments.
And the zoning hearing board's decision, and the only thing is to place monuments at the new property boundary. So it's, it's ready for, for your approval, and I have no other comments or issues with the project.
And they're not building anything, they're actually realized that the, part of the cemetery property, the cemetery itself, was across the lot line onto the WMA, so they want, that's why they need to adjust it.
Yeah, yeah. It's just extending their cemetery, and the WA doesn't use that parcel anyway, I believe that's abandoned. That was for a...
An old well.
Potential well, or an old well that was there, right, which is abandoned now.
You can add a condition that Mr. Hagan, Mr. Dalton owe us a round of golf, since they're not...
Yeah, since we, since we handled the WMA, that's right, okay. Fair enough.
It's in order for your approval, for your approval tonight.
All right, so that's Resolution Number 2023 dash...
What? 13?
13? Okay, thank you.
That's the, that's the application.
That's the application.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? From the public? All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The chair votes aye, motion carries 4-0. All right, thank you. You're welcome, Tim. Okay, next, 89 New York Road, additional waivers for eco chic.
I'll handle that one, and I actually lied to the last one. This is actually a smaller project than, or action item, action item than the one you just had. I think the representative here tonight, they can give a quick, a quick summary of, of what you need to do. This came from my office, the, the, as you know, there's field changes all the time that happen during the construction projects, but two of these required a waiver. I was uncomfortable doing that, it's field changes, they involve paving and curb work, what, I'm not sure.
Douglas Malloy.
Douglas, okay, thank you. I'll let him explain further, but you should have everything in your packet, and I think everything's in order tonight.
Thank you. I will keep this brief, my client did show up for this.
Thank you.
This is a very simple modification, basically a field change, to change part of the park lot, which's referred to as Phase Two of the construction project, from asphalt paving to gravel. In order to accommodate that, we'd need two waivers, one for the change from asphalt to, to gravel, and the other is to allow a berm in place of a hardened curb. And they're the only two waivers we're requesting. You had approved this project back in October of 2021, and this is a modification of the previously approved plan, so we're simply seeking approval of those two waivers. My client has reviewed the proposed resolution, and has, has already signed the acceptance of the conditions if the boards in writing grant the waiver of course.
Okay.
And just, real quick, and the areas that you're looking for the change, it's employee-only areas, these are public access areas, correct?
That is correct, employee-only, and I believe some minor storage.
I have nothing further to add.
Is that, is that going to be compacted?
Yes, it's still complies with zoning.
Still complies?
We're working on stormwater. That was probably the, the hang-up, is trying to address stormwater management, since it's still impervious, and then there's no curb, so that's been worked out already, and once that was, they're ready for approval for you tonight.
Okay.
I have no other, no other comments or issues with the project.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-14?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Questions from the public?
Craig asked, answered all the questions.
Yeah, we've been through the packet. Okay, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Thanks very much for coming in.
Could I hand out the acceptance?
Sure, absolutely.
Right to Jill, Doug.
Thanks for coming in tonight. Appreciate that.
We appreciate you showing up.
All right. Moving on. Next, which is 455 Nina Way. This is a preliminary and final. Craig?
The applicants here tonight, before Mr. Malloy speaks, I just want to let you know that you have not seen this project before, however, it's been around for a while. This started at sketch plan level. They had bigger plans, I think, than what you're seeing right now, the building was much bigger at the time. They worked through zoning issues, they worked through engineering issues, some natural resource issues that really impacted the property and how you could develop it. It's also a corner lot, so we had to work through all that, we worked through a sketch plan, planning commission. Did you go to zoning hearing board or not?
Went to the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, they went to zoning hearing board.
Right. At which point they accepted the condition to reduce the size of the building.
So although you've seen it for the first time, there's been a lot of work on this project. There are some, and we'll get in, if you have concerns about the waiver, we can talk about it, but they worked with us on conditions, each waiver has a condition. We had to work with what was given out there on the site with large trees, buffering issues with Murn's Road, and just, you know, trying to develop a site that, also with a drainage easement, a large drainage easement in the back. So again, I'm okay with the preliminary final, there's no other planning issues. I'll let Mr. Malloy present the project, but again, you have not seen this one.
I, I'm pretty familiar with it, though.
You are.
I, I know, I know. So...
So I'll turn that over to Mr. Malloy.
Yeah, thank you very much. Mike Malloy over my Redmond Maxwell Hipple. My client showed up at 6:00, but she was sick, and I told her, "Go home," I said. But I do have Wayne Keifer here from Showalter and Associates, and he can walk us through. And just, just really for the record, right, this is a really special one. These people, the applicants who own this company, live here in your township and are consolidating several businesses, business locations to sort of locate their main operation here. And they started the company in around 2018, and they've built it from scratch, it's a multimillion-dollar operation now, where they install telecom equipment on cellular towers across the country. So they have crews that go out, they needed some of the waivers, you'll see, and some of the little extra parking space, because they do have large trucks that park. It's not a high-intensity area, there's not a ton of employees, it's a little warehouse space and a little office, warehouse space and, and some office space to accommodate their, their use. But this is one that's, that I think the township should be really proud of, these guys have, have started here, choose to live here, want to employ people here, and are building their main headquarters, this 19,580-square-foot building. The lot's industrially zoned, it's just overgrown, it's not a forest, it's not tree, you know, it's not a woods. They did their best to preserve as many of the trees abutting the residential area, where you'll see we are encroaching, and Wayne can walk you through it if you have any questions, the side that we've asked to encroach into that Class 1 buffer is abutting and industrial use, and the applicants assured everybody that they're going to do the full plantings required, but within that buffer area. So I could put the plan up, or Wayne could walk you through it, but it's, it's a square, you know, basically on the lot, so happy to answer any questions, and we're satisfied with the resolution as well.
You want to see the plan, right? Yeah, yeah, can you put it up there for us?
Sure.
I mean, I'm familiar with, with it, but I don't know if the other board members...
There's not much to look at through dimensionally and stuff.
Yeah, I know there's, I know there were some trees.
There were, unfortunately, some of them were sort of smack and right...
In the middle, yeah.
You just can't do anything else.
But you were doing the maximum that you could do in that spot, and I appreciate that, because I am a tree hugger, of course. And I also like that, you know, with the, with the stormwater, that Craig, that you're happy with everything that they're doing with the stormwater management, so you don't, you don't have any...
It's a constrained lot with that easement, it takes up two frontages from this lot, so...
Okay.
Two, am I wrong about that? One frontage, sorry, one frontage, one side.
The light shaded area in the middle is the proposed warehouse, just under 20,000 square feet. Darker gray around the left side and on the top of the plant is the drainage easement that is being preserved. That is wooded, those trees are being preserved. The site is just about two acres, we're adding 80 trees and shrubs onto that site, besides what's there to remain. It's probably going to be the most landscaped plan property in the area. As I mentioned, we're encroaching into the buffer on the right-hand side, that is an industrial area, and I think if the project had been developed as part of the overall subdivision, there probably wouldn't be a buffer requirement there. But we are addressing that.
Okay.
And then to touch on stormwater, again, it's in the Street Road Industrial Park, even though there's regional basins in there, they're complying with their own stormwater management, like every other project, since there's issues with that basin, as you know. So they're addressing all the stormwater. You can see the impact, the reason for the waivers, that's a large drainage area, I'm not sure you've seen one bigger than that, or it's a lot this small, so... Without trying to go through and try to amend that, they shifted everything, which then impacted the buffer and created some waivers. So we did work through all that, they even had an arborist go out at our direction to try to hone down on the trees and woodlands, and I have no other comments. They've been working for quite a while, I know there's a little frustration at the beginning with the owner and what they wanted to do, and they had to scale it back, but it's ready for your approval tonight.
Yeah, besides the waivers that are listed in the resolution, everything else in the two review letters is a will comply.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept it.
Okay. So you're, this is 2023-15 now. So you motioned to accept, or to...
To approve preliminary.
Approve preliminary and final Resolution 2023-15 for 455 Nina Way, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, I appreciate the fact that you, you preserved as much of the stormwater features with the, with the shrubbery and plantings, and we do appreciate you working with us on that. I, yeah, please do, because as you know, for years, stormwater was ignored in Warminster, and it's become a huge headache, and we have to really, really focus on that, and I appreciate the fact that you complied, you know, and helped us with that, because every little bit counts, you know? So thank you very much. And I don't have any other questions, Craig, because I've been speaking with you a lot with this.
I just wanted to say, I'm satisfied also with what you've done with the stormwater and with all of the greenery, so I think it looks like a nice project, and welcome, and it's nice to have a resident, you know, we appreciate that.
It's nice to have the resident put a, put a, their headquarters here.
Yes.
It's well done, thank you.
Could you thank them for me? I appreciate that, thank you.
I'd like to ask, was this letter, I see this letter from Joe Veltin, that I was wondering if this was taken care of, with making sure that the fire apparatus could turn around?
Yes, we redid the truck turning plan provided to the fire marshal, who was satisfied with what we have.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Judy?
Yep.
All right. Let's, well, yeah, I know. Anybody from the public? John, come on up.
Just an easy question. John Privoval, 674 Joseph Avenue, on that diagram, I'm assuming that it may also be a rental, because it looks like they had two subdivided areas in the back with the garage, or is it going to be an owner occupied completely? Are they planning on putting renters in there or...
Completely owner operated.
Okay, that's all I was...
So the answer is completely owner operated.
Unfortunately, they've parceled the parking lot like that to reduce the impervious surface and you respect the ordinance.
Oh, all right, great.
Yeah, sure, sure.
I asked the same question.
Good question, John, good question. We knew you were here to ask those important questions.
That's, that's good.
No, that's good.
Any other comments from the public? No? All right, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries four oh. Again, it's a nice project, we appreciate everything that you did to, to help us out with stormwater and, you know, we hope the success for the company and keep that headquarters running for many years to come.
Thank you very much, I'll let them know.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. 1250 West Bristol Road, correct?
Yes, I think you hit your quota for approvals, so will this be discussion only, Mr. Malloy? Is that right? You saw this project two months ago, another project's been around for quite a while, I think we've, everybody's worked hard on both sides and got into a, compromised a lot on the product that you see tonight, the plan, I'll let Mike over a little of the history and then they have the draft resolution, Mike can go through that or touch on that if you have any questions, if not, it's all ready to go for you tonight. Again, this is preliminary only, so you will see this again, so any issues that you still have, if we can work them out at final, they'd be more than happy to do that, if it's a major issue, then we'll try and resolve it tonight, I don't think there are, if it's minor and you still want them to look at something, then we can have them address that and come back to final and have those answers, so I'll turn it over to Mike.
One question before you start, Mike, Rob, do you have drawings tonight? Excellent, wonderful.
I colored them in for them.
All right, beautiful.
We're good learners.
Yeah.
We learn really well, we learn from our mistakes. Which last time, I mean, we had a resolution, and I, I'll go back, I mean, this goes back before predates certainly a lot of people's involvement, and it's based on a settlement agreement with the prior owners and the township, and the settlement agreement allowed for a certain amount of density and it showed 26 lots and maybe this is the third or fourth iteration, I don't know, of this plan, but we're down to 20 and it respects, you know, we think the settlement plan, which was attached to the stipulation, which Rob probably has on the disc if you want to see it, but also, you know, as Craig said, really was a back-and-forth and make sure that we pushed and pulled and respected as much of the environmental features as possible. And Rob will get up and, you know, answer any questions you have, you know, we're happy with the resolution, it's the waivers that we think we need to pull this off and the disturbance that we do have, I think, is, the message is, it's to the far less significant features, you know, of, of, of the, of the property, you know, so the woodlands that we're disturbing are not the great woodlands, the good woodlands, they're the, you know, and we have had an arborist go out, we have seen it, you know, we think we have as little, I don't know, impact versus the existing development out there, and in fact, as Rob will show you, you know, a lot less in certain points, so, you know, we've pulled back impervious surface that's closer to sensitive areas and sensitive features and the new development doesn't encroach on those anymore. So overall, you know, we think it's an improvement and we think it's sort of really the best compromise kind of place we can get, given the constraints of the, the ordinance, which the stipulation didn't really address very well, right? And the constraints of the stipulation itself. So Rob Cunningham's here, and I said, you know, you guys have seen this before, we've kind of talked about this, we're happy to answer any questions you have, I don't really have anything for him specifically to present to you unless there's, I'm going to kind of let you guys cue us to, to say what you want, what do you want to hear about, in particular, any waivers or, or anything like that.
I'll, if, I'll jump in if I could, Mr. Chairman. Just in case there's anybody new listening tonight or in the audience, we keep referring always to a court-approved plan, just the Court of Common Pleas ordered a settlement with the applicant, which was the Studley property at 1250 West Bristol Road, most people call it the Studley property and I learned that quite quickly, that, that's, that's what it goes by, the order was December 13th, 2010, so we're 13 years into this, the, there really weren't many conditions and that's why it took so long, but there was a plan of 25 units that is much larger impact to the property than what you're seeing tonight, I know the engineer relayed that, I don't know if you have that.
It's the third, I think it's the third.
So I really think that's the most important thing and why there's so many waivers is the...
It's pretty hard to see it, it's pretty... Driveways in the same location.
So they reduced it from 25 units to 20 and...
Go with one more, Jill.
You can kind of see there's a red outline, but...
Oh, I see.
It really pops on the, on my computer.
Forgot to color this one. There you go. So you kind of see to the top of the screen there, there is impact completely within the floodplain, in the wetlands, in fact, there was units over top of the wetlands which are now being preserved, so that's where, trying to take a plan from 2010, match it up with your new ordinances, and then, you know, obviously the developer reduced the density to, to help with that, which I know was, was a big concession, in exchange for that, there's several waivers with conditions to make this, it'll be a private community, so you will not own this road, this will be a private road, but you can see the impact, court-approved plan to the plan now, I think that's the...
That was, what we're seeing there in the red is the court-approved plan?
Yes.
Yes.
It, it was, you know, it's an overall impact to the neighbors and, and, you know, the property itself and the natural resources.
Yeah, and it was an impact to the natural resources, which is right along the Shamney Creek.
Which is probably one of the bigger things that we had to work through.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's how we got to the plan we have.
Right.
We complied the current ordinances.
Okay, so Rob, we see that and we see the impact that would have been to the natural resources and the floodplains and the riparian zones and all this stuff, it's important for the residents and the township, you know, can you show us the, go to the new plan and show us how everything's preserved, please, because I think that's important for the residents to see.
Go to the second one, that's a good one to show, it's a comparison of our plan versus the existing aerial, so you go up one, scroll down, oh, you can see it on here if you scroll down. So you can see the existing house is in the riparian buffer, there we go.
Yeah, that's going down, right?
The fence and the lawn, all of those items, this is actually Zone 1 of the riparian buffer, this, this is Zone 2, our stormwater basin is in here, it's permitted to be in here, it's going to be vegetated, it, it will enhance the, obviously, water quality from the property. So we're kind of pulling improvements out of there, we're pulling improvements back, I know this isn't a natural feature, but it's, it's further away from the neighbors, there's a driveway that goes all the way along the property line back here, we're going to be removing that, and then, then there's additional parking and gravel, and that's right up against that existing wetland, so even though we are going to be within the riparian buffer on that side, we're actually pulling improvements, so we're going to disturb the buffer just to remove...
Right.
The gravel, the cars that are parked there, the other items, so we think that it's an overall improvement, it gives us the opportunity to re-vegetate that area, put in trees, planting shrubs, wetland plantings, whatever we, you know, coordinated with Craig and when we come back to final, have a detailed plan of what that's going to be, but it's an enhancement, so...
And it'll be also deep restricted, it'll be part of the open space or deep restricted covenants, so that will be able to...
So we're going to preserve the, the wetlands.
Correct, and, and so the way that this is going to be, I guess, subdivided for, for the homeowners is, it's going to be footprint ownership, so they'll, they'll own their home and their deck, but they don't own anything else, so the homeowners association or community association will be responsible for it, so it will prevent somebody from doing some encroachment, something like that.
In other words, backfilling it and planting grass seed.
Correct, yeah, or coming in for a shed.
Right, right.
Or something like that, and, and again, we, we're going to vegetate it really well, you know, what makes this different than from some of the other properties that we've worked on is, this isn't a rough piece of ground, this is redevelopment, you don't think of it because it's essentially a, a single-family home or, or farmstead, but that's what it is, it's redevelopment of a property that kind of, before the ordinances were there, pushed the limit and now we're pulling them back and tightening everything up, so we think it's an overall improvement and gives us an opportunity to, to increase the riparian buffer.
And then, so I think that's all been resolved as far as at staff level and that was reflected in the approval tonight, draft resolution. The other big issue was fire, was a secondary emergency access, at one point there was a trail proposed, I don't know if you don't, you showed the first one?
If you go up to more, that's not so clear. Yeah, please.
That is something they still have time to, they're willing to work with us on that, but as of now, the joint property owner has not given permission, they're willing to work with the township on that, so that's not reflected in here, it's still shown, and at final approval, we'll have to make that decision whether there's emergency access to the back, that's not a secondary access, just emergency only, to the, I forget the road name, Dr. La College, is that one?
La College is the one I'm going to hear of. Yeah, it goes to La College.
Okay, so, so that's still reflected, but that issue has been kind of put until final approval.
Okay. So, Rob, one, one last thing, because I know we had talked about this before and I just want, so, and this is really not for my edification, but just for anyone that's watching or anyone that's here, show us where the 100-year floodplain is.
The, the 100-year floodplain is this dash line here.
Right.
Comes into the site and it continues.
Yeah, so, so the, the, the overall development is outside of that?
All, yeah, all work is done outside of the floodplain, our driveway's outside the floodplain.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're, we're high and dry.
Good.
And because we're pulling improvements back and we're going to do our storm management, hopefully we're going to help others in the community kind of with this development.
Okay.
I would like to see the secondary access, you may have a 500-year storm, which we have every other year right now, you could have a clog culvert up by Bristol Road, which then, you know, impacts flooding, I think, on both sides, and they recognize that as well and are willing to continue to work with us and the neighbor for acquiring that easement, so again...
Well, that easement's for emergency services, correct?
Just emergency, so that, you know, if they had to, they'd get people out.
Right.
You know, get fire trucks in there and ambulance.
There was historically some talk about pedestrian connectivity through our property, we're willing to provide that as well as part of this trail or the emergency access.
It could be a trail combination, emergency access.
But if, if we want to block off both sides, so emergency service is the only one that can access it, we'll do that, we're, we're open to have that discussion and, and we understand the desire to have it, unfortunately, we're, you know, kind of like an isolated piece here and, you know, we reached out to the neighborhood, at this point, they're not willing to provide us that access.
Okay.
I just wanted to add, I, I really like the, the steps that you're taking to protect the wetlands, what you're doing for the stormwater management, everything, the less, the less density, which I think is important also, I think it, it looks so much better than what had, what we had in the past, so...
Thank you.
Yes, that's all I have.
Yeah, I know, it's been, it's been a while, and I know there was, there was an order issued by, by a judge on this whole thing and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to work with us to, to make it safe, for one, and to protect some of the natural resources, that's, that was very important to us. So I see, I'm looking through the, the responses and it looks like there's a lot of will complies in here, Craig, right?
They're at a point where everything's a will comply.
Other than these waivers, anything would be will comply?
And all the waivers are outlined, it's been reviewed by staff, there's conditions attached, everything is enumerated in Scott's draft resolution, which will be 2023-16, I believe.
16.
So your little cheat sheet is on page three where, or, page three where we talk about the waivers, like I said, there are more than typical, which was the stumbling block because of the, you know, trying to incorporate old plan, new, new ordinance and then preserve natural resources and still address design criteria and new ordinance, so I'm comfortable with everything, I have no other issues to go over tonight.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, do you have what the, they'll look like, other than just blocks?
Remember this?
Do you have a picture with the front of the...
Not with us today, it's going to be a standard two, two-story townhouse, I believe they're 22 feet wide, so obviously we'll be back, we'll show you exactly what we anticipate they're going to be, but...
Looks like a beautiful park setting.
Yeah, it, it is actually pretty quiet back there, if you're back there, but it is, it'll be, they're going to be nice, they're going to be, you know, obviously, two, two drive, two-car driveway, so, you know, there's not going to be a parking problem, so we're hopeful it's going to be a successful project.
Okay, one other question, I'm hoping you're going to get access there so that the children, if there's families there, can access the park that's out on La College, or you have any intention of putting any kind of play area in that neighborhood, just as if there's something for the children?
We weren't, we weren't, just based on the, the kind of, how tight everything is and how few homes, again, we, again, the trail would provide some connectivity, there's also the sidewalk, so if somebody was to walk or ride their bike, they'd be able to...
Is there, there's not sidewalk on Bristol Road?
There's Bristol Road, it actually ends right here, so we're going to run it...
Are you going to tie in a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, again, that, that meets kind of one of the goals of pedestrian connectivity and, and yes, we all understand that, you know, people will want to go down to the park, so we think that we'll get that.
And we did talk about that at the planning commission, there's no room for it, Janice, and if they're...
Okay, I was just curious.
Taken away room for fire trucks to turn around and stuff like that, if you put that in, so...
I just figured you could put it in a grassy area that's, you know...
Yeah.
So I know we had discussed earlier before, Rob, about the, the steep slopes, some of them were probably not natural.
Correct.
Were all squareway with the steep slopes?
So those waivers were removed, the other one that was removed, we looked, we typed the sharpener pencil, we pulled back our, our grading, so we're not going to disturb any of the non-sensitive woodlands.
Okay.
Or, we're going to disturb within the ordinance limit.
Right.
But the, again, the ones that are in sensitive areas will be preserved, so...
Okay, Rob and I had two separate conversations to go over the waivers and that's what you've seen in your draft resolution, so we worked out every condition of your, every waiver.
Okay. All right, any other questions? We, we need to have a motion to approve Resolution 2023-16, conditional preliminary land development approval for 1250 West Bristol Road. Is there a motion?
I'll motion, I'll second.
Second? Okay, we've heard from the board, any comments from the, John?
Listen, I just had a question, John Privoval, 674 Joseph Avenue, because it's so tight back there and we have the thing with the, the fire department, are we restricting off-road parking there and is there anything like that? And if someone has a party at their house, say they have 10 or 15 cars, where are they going to park? So would be walk, walk, on the highway, on the road, around the, around the perimeter?
Wouldn't be on Bristol Road, that's...
No, I'm talking about inside the, inside the...
Well, that's entirely a private road.
There's two, two-car garages. Two-car driveway. Two-car driveway.
Yeah, but if you have a, say, say...
The ordinance doesn't, that comes up.
Doesn't, doesn't have anything to do with it, okay, I didn't know.
I hear, I hear you.
If you have a fire while that's happening, then you got an issue, you know, where we get these cars?
Yeah, that, you always do and that, that's...
You got to deal with it when it comes up.
Every missed penalty goes through that.
John, if you had a fire on Lego Drive and we had, you know, 50 people in there with 50 cars, we'd have a problem there too.
Well...
All right, any other, any other comments from the public? No, if not, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and the Chair votes aye and the motion carries four... All opposed, and the chair votes aye and the motion carries foro. Thank you, we'll look forward to seeing you again.
This is quite an improvement, thank you.
Yes.
I can't wait to see.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for working with us and having something that worked out for both of us. All right. Public comment? Public comment, going once, going twice? Come on up, Chris.
Good evening, Chris McDonald, Hartsville Fire Company. I just want to let the residents know that Hartsville Fire Company is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year. It was founded after a fire on Labor Day in 1923. It was a large barn fire and residents got together, community got together and formed the Hartsville Fire Company. We've been part of this community for 100 years now. To celebrate our 100th anniversary, we're going to celebrate it with the community by holding a, what the fire service calls a muster, at the Worms Community Park on May 3rd. It's going to be a display of brand-new and antique fire trucks from across the area, not just Bucks County. It's going to be from 10 to 3, there'll be food trucks and ice cream truck. And there'll be displays of some of the antique trucks, they're bringing some really old horse-drawn carriages for this, and it'll be pretty cool. We have a local fire company that's going to bring a pump and they're going to get these old fire trucks working again.
Wow.
Nice.
Fantastic, that's on a Wednesday.
May 3rd.
May 3rd.
I think you're on June 3rd.
Oh, June 3rd, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
That's why I had the 6 original.
Yes, June 3rd.
Yeah, because originally you guys said May 6th, and I was like, oh, okay.
So it's June 3rd, I'm sorry.
All right, well, you know what, fantastic, Chris, you know, and it's a, it's a nice little piece of history there. And you guys, for 100 years, you've been there for us and we appreciate that. We'll, we'll make sure we get that out on our Facebook pages and everything as well.
Great.
I'll spread the word, and I'll be sure to be there.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to seeing you next month, Chris. Okay. Any other public comment? All right. Consent agenda. Consider approval of the Board of Supervisors' minutes dated March 2nd, 2023. Bucks County Consortium Stone and Materials bid approval. Cooperation agreement with Bucks County Redevelopment Authority for the blight program. Approval of AFSMI Worms Township Employee Organization Agreement, or WIDO, for a new four-year contract, which we're happy to report. Extension of the Ben Wilson Senior Activity Center Association lease for additional seven-year terms, based on options in the February 2016 lease agreement.
Two additional seven-year terms, excuse me.
Two, sorry, I missed that. Two additional seven-year terms. Acceptance of Renee Steckline's resignation from Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. That's a term that expires at the end of this year. And the Birdtown Resolution recommendation from the EAC, which I remember we were, we were applying for that from the Audubon Society when I was the Chair of the EAC. And it had some really, really strict requirements to meet that, and we did meet that. I was pretty, pretty proud that we did. So we have a resolution for that now as well. And consider waste markets and gas and go release number one from the escrow account in the amount of $909,576.55. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Okay, Tom, do you want to get into any of this stuff? I know that the stone and materials is for Public Works.
Yes, sir, thank you. It's the annual materials bid that is supervised by the Bucks County Consortium of Useful Governments. And we, we, we do a couple of different bids with them each year, the salt, and then this is the other one.
Okay.
Cooperation agreement with Bucks County Redevelopment Authority for the blight program. We got the blight program off the ground and the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority actually has the authority, small a, to conduct the blight, the blighting process in our name when it comes to taking of the blighted property. So they require that we sign off on an agreement, which is very pro forma. The approval of the AFSMI Worms Township Employee Organization Agreement has been a long time coming, but we finally have an agreement. And it was retroactive to the first of this year for some things and retroactive to March 1st of this year for other things. And that concludes all our contracts, so we're good for a number of years now. And the extension of the Ben Wilson Senior Activity Center lease for two additional seven-year terms. That's, I, that's the outgoing director, it brought to my attention that things that have been expired during this year, something she wanted to take care of before she left. They run the activity center, we own the building. And they're leasing it for a dollar. I'm going to skip F and G and go right to H and say we had, you know what, I'm just going to skip F, G, and H.
Yeah. Mike, do you want to talk about the, do you want to talk about the Birdtown?
No, no.
You go, okay? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the, with the resignation of Renee.
Renee Steckline.
Steckline. The two people that are members at large, can they step up and replace that person?
We are going to.
So they have a quorum?
We are going to evaluate who's been showing up and who's not. I know Mike had sent us an email, it's been a while.
We are aware.
So we are going to terminate people that have not shown up and we'll be reappointing people that want to participate.
Well, do they have some people that are at large that have been coming and attending regularly? Can they just, can we?
They cannot just step up, we have to approve it.
Okay.
Okay, so, but we will evaluate those, those that have not been showing up, unfortunately, for whatever reason. And we're sorry that you either can't participate or choose not to, whether it's your, you know, busy schedule or whatever. But we're going to have to, we, this is an important part, especially for volunteering. So we're going to, we're going to take care of that. At the next meeting, we'll have, so anybody that really wants to, anybody that wants to volunteer for the Parks and Rec, please send in your, an email to the township email address and we'll take everything under consideration. Come on up, Mike, I knew I'd get you up here sooner or later.
Yeah, I, I'm all for getting more people involved, and I know you guys expanded this as an advisors. The ordinance says four, but we did seven. I just wanted to kind of point that out. But I'm not complaining because, like I said, I'd rather have more people involved than not. It's just that the people that count towards our quorum, we're not getting.
Yeah, I understand, it's a problem and it's.
July is the last time we've actually had a quorum.
Right, so, so the people that are on that citizen advisory, I think it was, we put them on?
Yeah, yeah, there's, I'm not going to get into the specifics, but I mean, there's somebody, I wouldn't even know them if, and they were voting map, I wouldn't know them if they were citizens.
Well, what I'm saying is that if there's people that are on the citizens advisory that are participating, we will probably just move them into.
That's what I was asking, because, and the reason I ask now is because their next meeting's on the 2nd of May. We don't meet until the 4th of May.
Well.
And they won't have a quorum to make decisions.
We have to go through.
Okay.
Everything and see who's showing up and who's not. And probably send them an email or a letter and notify them that if, if they're not interested or not going to show up, then we'll be replacing them.
Okay.
And if you're interested in, you know, checking with anybody on the board, I mean, I pretty much go to everything with meetings in advance, although I'm going to miss the yard sale next, on the other next week. But so I know basically who's there and who's not. And there's, there's some really good committed people there that are citizen advisors, they show up all the time, just like when I was a citizen advisor or when I was just a citizen showing up and they couldn't make a quorum. I'm like, I'm sitting here.
Yeah, right.
And we have people that show up all the time and they, they just don't count for support because they're not voters members.
Right.
So just let me know if I can help in any way.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Pat Boyle, the citizen advisor at Parks around, on 6310 Centennial Station. One of the issues is that it's not against the people that were appointed. The meeting date changed from Tuesday to a Wednesday and that interfered with a lot of people's schedules. So that's how come, or Wednesday to a Tuesday, it went from Wednesday to a Tuesday. So that's a big issue.
I thought that was corrected.
No, we stuck with, we stuck with the new schedule.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's what the problem was.
So why did they do that, Pat, stick with the new schedule? Why?
It was decided of those that could show up to vote for it and we didn't hear from the other people.
Well, were the other people showing up before that or no?
Sporadically.
All right, so, so is the problem still there?
One person, one meeting.
Right.
Half, half those meetings.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, I think it's time, we'll, we'll put people in there that are.
But I just wanted to let you know that that is one of the issues, okay?
Okay.
But we're all good with the change.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, we want to have participants, we don't want to appoint people and not have participating members. Defeats the purpose.
I'd like to make a comment regarding Renee Steckline. She has been a member, do you know for how many years, Tom?
I do not, it might be in the.
I know that it's, yeah, I may have missed that too. I know many, many, many years, am I right, Mike? Yeah, before me, before, yes. And I just wanted to thank her because that took a major commitment and she participated in almost every event they, we ever had.
She was not one of the ones that helped.
That's right, she was not, she was.
We're losing one that shows up, right?
We're losing the one that always showed up, so Renee, if you change your mind, let us know. But thank you for all your years of service, we do appreciate it. I'm sure, and thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Kathy. And as far as the, the Birdtown Resolution, as I said, when we, when I was on the EAC, we had to go through an incredible amount of, I guess, scrutiny and meet certain requirements from the Audubon Society to actually, they acknowledged that we were actually meeting those requirements to be, for the township to be part of that, which is, you know, birdhouses, habitat, feeding stations and, and everything that, not so much at the park, because that's pretty natural now, but in the residents, in your homes. And we had to actually prove to them that we were, we were compliant. And it was quite a, it was quite a journey and it was a difficult thing to do, but we had, I thank all the residents, they did a fantastic job. We were able to count all the, all the requirements at each individual house and we met those requirements and they approved it. And I'm happy that we can approve this resolution. Okay, so any other, any other comments? All right, is there?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, did we do that already?
We did.
We did, okay, I thought so. I know the poll came up.
We have to do it twice with you.
All right, yeah, yeah, things, people aren't showing up and I'm a little confused today.
We got, we women got to keep them straight.
All right, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and the chair votes aye, motion carries foro, thank you. Thanks for keeping me straight tonight.
That's right.
I walked in immediately to a snafu. John, you're up instead of Mark tonight.
In the place of Mr. McKee, I will request a motion to approve the bills list dated March 16th, 2023, in the amount of $1,8,791.86, along with the supplemental bills list dated March 16th, 2023, in the amount of $1,033,949.12.
A lot of bills we're paying this month, huh?
Yeah, catching up.
So moved.
Second? Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Any from the public? All right, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and the chair votes aye, motion carries foro. Thank you very much, we can pay our bills, it's nice to say that we can pay our bills as well. I lost a lot of, a lot up top the first couple of years I was here. All right, John.
All right, looking at the financial reports through the end of February, we're tracking very similarly to last year. We do have a 3% increase in revenue, which is about $57,000, and a decrease in expenses of 3%, which is just under $72,000. So we're tracking pretty, when we're talking about millions of dollars, $50,000, $60,000 is actually within a reasonable amount. Tracking towards budget, revenues are 12% this year and last year compared to budget, and expenses are at 13%. So we are really tracking similar to last year, which is a good thing because we finished last year very well. Some of the big swings that happen, are happening on the revenue side is transfer taxes down $173,000 in just two months compared to last year. I think it was more, last year was up compared to prior years. Earned income tax revenue, that's up $140,000, which is about 15%, so that's trending at a higher percentage than usual. And building permits are actually up $87,000. So things are going good on the revenue side, I wish the transfer tax didn't drop as much, but there, that's one of the hardest things to try and predict.
We knew that was going to happen sooner or later anyway.
Yeah, that was inevitable. Keep up those rates. That's all I have on the financial stuff, I do have some departmental things just to go over. The first thing, good news is we got our liquid fuels funding for the year. That was $931,000, that came in mid-March. One of the questions at the last board meeting, someone said, is with having very little winter storms, pretty much two years in a row so far, what happens to the money that was budgeted for? Well, we pay for a lot, most of the salt in the road program through liquid fuels. So the money stays in there and stays restricted, so we're good on that. The other thing, good news is that we're actually turning over, I see a giant shot coming, I can't help but smile.
That's right.
We are about to turn over all the information to the auditors for the year. We're about a month and a half in front of last year when they came out. I'm trying to have them do most, as much work as possible back in their office. It's easier for them, it's easier for us to just kind of box everything up and give it to them. So I'm hoping to have the audit done at least a month ahead of last year. So that's something to look forward to.
Yes, it is.
And the final thing is, we have been looking around at ways to invest some of the reserves that we have, especially in the capital fund, because that's where we have money sitting there for projects, not just this year, next year, but in the future. So the one thing, it's an approved bank, it's univest, is to go into their preferred money market. Right now, on what I'm looking to shift, we're making about $300 to $400, $500 a month. The way their interest rates are working, we would probably be making around $21,000 in a month. So this is something I'm looking forward to, switching that money and then I can record out in the next couple of months of, all the interest that'll be going in that. And over a year, it could be $250,000, that's more roads that can be paved with the money.
Absolutely. John, you always, you never cease to amaze me, you're always, you're always a great job.
And I try and be brief, sorry.
Yes.
I agree, I think he caught on to that real fast.
Not only the, not only the terseness of it, but the, the fact that you're always looking for ways to generate additional revenue for us with what we have, and I really appreciate that.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. No unfinished business, let's go to new business. We have the Street Road Industrial Park Basin O and M action. Who's like to jump on that?
I'd like to say some comments, Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Certainly.
All right, so the reason this is on the agenda is last year, we notified the, this is a basin that's in the Street Road Industrial Conflux. It's privately owned and we've determined through our experts that the basin isn't functioning the way it should be functioning. It's, it's several decades old, we don't believe it was ever properly finished. But we do have an operation and maintenance agreement that allows us to, after giving the notice to the property owner, to come into compliance with the, with the proper functioning of the basin, that if they don't, then we have the right, under the O and M that they signed, to unilaterally take that action on that property. And we believe, based on the analysis done by the Township Engineers Office and the resources available to the Public Works Office, that we'd be able to do this on our own. And I'm not looking for any official action from the board tonight, we have already put them on notice, but I just wanted to make sure that now that the, you know, winter is finally behind us, I think, this is something that we want to have Public Works schedule for, for some work this year. And so that's why, that's why I put this on the agenda now, it looks like Craig's going to correct every point I just tried to make.
You were right on. Scott's stealing my information here. No, Tom summarized that very well, I'll put an earring spin on it. We did a deficiency notification to that owner on March 30th, 2022, by certified mail. In there, we outlined, based on our inspection, that the facility was not capturing and detaining the water as originally designed. The pipes were, outlet pipe was not connected.
The pipes were, outlet pipe was not connected. In fact, pretty much the water was going in and going out. That's probably one of the larger repairs needed, in fact, replaced completely. There's other erosion that was quite significant. There was extensive debris, clogging, and then just accumulation of sediment over the years. It was never being properly maintained, which is third item. And then based on our aerial mapping and site visits, it was almost completely covered in vegetation, which, again, was not being maintained and does not aid in the functionality of the basin. So that was done last year, actually a year ago. It's a direction of the solicitor manager. We have then, since Mr. Scott's direction, worked with Public Works, we've seen how much they could do. And I think Andrew's comfortable and we're comfortable in just replacing the pipe. We have a preliminary design, basically some minor grading, some pipe work, and get it back functioning. I recommend, I think Tom does as well, Scott will just have to make sure we're following legal requirements there on notification and how we proceed. I think they are aware of it and have not really communicated in the past nine months, six to nine months. I think Mr. Van Louwen, there's.
Well, I just went, I can tell you how I know this. I just went to the dentist last week. Last time I talked with John Van Louwen about this was at the dentist when I was at six months prior, so, about since, six months since we talked about this.
You guys scheduled together?
Do we hold your meetings? That's pretty, that's pretty, pretty bleak.
Oh, it just, it was just, I was just leaving the parking lot that day, so I remember.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's been about six months since we talked about it. We've talked about different things at different times and there is a potential, you know, we could take ownership of the space then as well to make sure it continues to function properly. Or not us, but the, the authority as the manager of the stormwater system.
And I think that's phase two. So I think Tom, we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
We don't want to spend a lot of money and then we don't own it, or the authority doesn't have access to it. So let's get this thing repaired. It's been talked about for quite a while, I think. Tom and I both were in agreement. We talked to staff, we just never put it in front of you. You know, we haven't spent a lot of money, but the next step will require finalizing plans, any permits needed. You know, we have to go through the proper agencies. And then if you're comfortable, have Public Works do that sometime this year. And then continue to work on acquiring the property and then we can really let the authority take over, or we can, and, and work on that basin.
Okay. And it would also want us to pursue, if we could, to lean the property for the expenses of, of the repair.
I, I'm okay.
Leave that to the solicitors, yes.
I mean, Tom wanted to give an update, it does say an action item, but I'd be comfortable if the board would authorize us to finalize the design, work with Public Works on acquiring the proper permits. They may want to have a couple of changes. And I'd like to finalize it in a package and then we can give an update at a later meeting. We've kind of been waiting in limbo here to not spending more money and start opinion permits and you not authorize the work.
It's, it's time.
Yeah.
It's been, it's, it's, it needs to be done. That's my opinion anyway.
It's been way overdue.
Way overdue and we have no cooperation.
Yeah. It's in the back of the Street Road Industrial Park.
What's that going in a way?
Isn't it?
Yes, yeah, lot 41.
Right.
Same side of the street as the.
So how much, and right now, it's not capturing basically anything. Water's coming in and out, so it's not retaining any. And, and all that discharges down to twin streams, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's.
That's a mess.
They have enough problems down there.
You saw tonight, you had a development in this complex years ago. And to be honest with you, I'm really happy everybody's worked with my office because there's no ordinance, there's no requirements that they have to do their own detention. But kind of word by mouth through the engineers, everybody's coming doing their own detention because that basin isn't functioning.
Right.
And every time they come in with a proposed development, I say, okay, prove that your stormwater gets conveyed down to that basin and it, and it's being detained. Well, everybody knows the history, I mean, everybody. I haven't had one developer come through in that area that said, hey, there's already a basin built. Unless they're right adjacent to it, the couple that are right adjacent to it. So you have, you approved one tonight that they took care of their own stormwater management. Plus, the new regulations are, are much better than what was done back fifteen years ago. So how much of that industrial park does that capture? All of it? I have a. I know, I, you know. No, actually all of it, just, just about all of it, yes. Just about all of it?
All of, all the, all the, all the, all the, all the streets.
Coming down Patricia and all that? Yeah. I have.
That's true to the other side.
Well, we have a finalized design. In fact, Michael's here from my office. He's been working on it. We have a rough drainage area map. We have to finalize everything. We have, I was able to acquire design plans that, they were going to do this work years ago and then it cost too much and need permits. So I acquired a lot of the information. It was a draft form survey, so we saved a lot of money. But all of the park and then, actually, there's, it can be upwards of 125 acres. And we're being conservative. Obviously, we're looking at aerials.
Well, 125 acres is significant amount of stormwater.
I'm sorry, that's the total drainage area. Drainage area to the basin is 65, yeah, 66 acres to that basin.
66 acres, that's still a significant amount of stormwater.
And around it is drained down to that same area as 125.
Okay.
And 66 is going to that basin, so. So I, I.
So I'll move that, that our engineers finalize the design. What else was in that?
We'll work with, with the staff and Public Works to finalize the design and then acquiring necessary erosion control permits, plans, prepare those and get it ready for you. And then we can provide an update before we go out. I guess we don't have to commit it. So if everything's in-house, then we'll just present it prior to the Public Works starting.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
I'll, I'll put a budget together, obviously, for all that as well, with Andrew.
You know somebody's going to be looking for that.
Someone will be asking for how much. All right. Any other questions from the board? I mean, it's been a long time coming. Any from the public? All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and the chair votes aye. Motion carries four oh. Thank you. Thanks, Greg. I know that's been a, that's been a real problem for years. There was a lot of stuff going on in that industrial park that was overlooked. All right. Where are we at now? Appointment, appointment of the planning commission member. I am going to move we appoint Jim Crossson.
I'll second it. It's not a, it's, it's to the Blight Committee.
The Blight Committee, but member of the planning commission, member to the Blight Committee, yes.
Okay, yes.
Thought that's what I said, yeah.
No.
I did?
We knew what you meant.
Thanks for keeping me straight tonight. Started off, it started off rough.
Brian, you really messed him up. When you weren't here, he.
Had me all messed up tonight.
I'll second that.
Anyway, all right, seconded by Kathy. I think then we'll be ready to roll with that, right? We have enough, we have everybody, the membership's complete? All right, yes. Questions from the board? From the public?
When are they going to meet? Yeah, how soon can we start?
We'd have to advertise them.
Well, Jeff was here earlier.
Need to advertise the meetings.
Yeah, you'll have to set up the meeting and advertise them and.
Okay.
I'm going to vote on it and then I'm going to leave it to my, my women here. Is that that I can't control?
Yeah, Tom told me it's going to take a little, few months or something like that.
Yeah, well. All right, so let's call the question. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, chair votes aye. Motion carries four oh.
I just want to make a comment based on that. And we, obviously, everybody is anxious to, we do have at least one that I am involved with that we need to get done. But before we, the board, the committee can even meet, there is a lot of stuff that needs to be done on the administrative side. We have to notify, we have to go through the code enforcement process, which we are now in the middle of. We have a hearing scheduled with, with the district justice to prosecute the violations in the abysmal state of the House. And then if we get that affirmative ruling from the judge, we would then notify the township offici, excuse me, the committee officially that we think this is something that, we, the staff, think this is something that the committee should consider for designated as a blighted home. And there are some things we have to do at that meeting that include going through the, on the record, going through the history of the property, sharing photographs. Everybody has to go visit its site and so, but I imagine we're going to be, by, probably by the middle of the summer, we should be ready to do this.
Okay.
But for the one that I'm thinking of, which I won't disclose the location, but.
All right.
Tonight. So thank you very much.
Sure they may know who it is.
Yes.
All right. This is a good one. Resolution in support of Bucks County Township officials for establishing a consortium for legal and legislative action concerning sale of municipal water and sewer assets.
The, the Bucks County Township officials had asked that each of the member municipalities, the member townships adopt the draft resolution that they supplied to, in advance of the PSATS conference coming up later this month, to support the idea that if there, if somebody else wants to bid for the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, that there are changes to the law first. So this would allow for the, for this consortium that would be created for all the municipalities to fund lobbying and.
To, to modify Act 12. I'm sure that's to modify Act 12, which has been put forth and enacted years ago to make it difficult for municipal authorities to operate and to make it easier for private water companies to purchase them. So I'm pretty, pretty, pretty on top of that one too, Tom. So, thank you.
And the reason I didn't put it on the consent agenda is because it's not, it wasn't, the resolution wasn't written by us.
Right.
It was written by them, so I thought, you know, and you're all going to, I'm sure you're all going to hear about a lot at Hershey.
Right.
At the beautiful lodge. So thank you very much.
I know Judy will be busy up there again.
Oh, yeah. We all will.
All right, is there a motion to establish the, it's a resolution, right?
Well, it's their resolution.
It's their resolution, yes.
We would.
It's a support. It's a support.
Support the resolution.
Support the resolution.
Is there a motion to support the resolution?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any more questions from the board? Questions or comments from the public? All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, chair votes aye. Motion carries four oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm sorry, go ahead. Do you want to answer?
Ah, sure, let's, let's get to the last one, which is a very important.
Right, we could segue into the other thing, don't we?
Yes, yes. So the replenishment of Shenandoah Woods escrow with Bucks County Redevelopment Authority in the amount of $485,000. I think we have a check here now.
Well.
Oh, he's not even listening.
He's not paying attention.
Listen, we, we have to replenish the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority for $485,000. Can you help us out?
Yeah, can you help us?
$298,000 of that is for the concrete removal.
Yes.
For Fritz, for Fritz Banky, that was alluded to early before Jeff, who took us a round of applause and then left with $485,000 bill on the table.
That's right. He didn't stick around for that.
If he doesn't stick around, that means he doesn't want it.
Right, obviously.
I, I heard I missed something.
You did. State Rep. Mr. Monroe.
You know what happens when you become a state representative is you lose.
You forget about us?
No, no. You lose control over your calendar.
Yes.
So unfortunately, I was triple booked tonight. I started my day triple booked.
Well, we, we took a short recess and regrouped, but the women on the board kept me in control tonight, so.
I heard you.
I was all over the place.
You easily get frazzled.
Yeah, well, no, I don't, but that was a good one.
You frazzled him. Don't let him deny it.
Is that our check?
But you're here.
Yes.
Unfortunately, Frank's not and neither is Jeff Darwick, but we'll, we'll have to.
They were here earlier.
Yeah.
We'll have another photo op.
Yeah, I, I don't want to take up anyone's time at home for that, but I do want to just acknowledge it. Thank you. And I, I got, I got plenty of messages, but that is what happens. When you become a state representative, you're all over the place. And you're completely at mercy of your calendar on your phone. And unfortunately, that took me a good hour away today for, for several different things, so, but.
That's okay because you bring checks with you, so we're okay. We forgive you.
That's the best part of being a state representative.
Mike, you're forgiven.
Immediately forgiven.
So hopefully it'll be one of many.
Yes. Yes, and this is another, this is another shovel-ready project, Brian, and we appreciate all your hard work.
Let's give my hand. He missed it.
Yep, he missed it.
Yay!
All right, so. Is there a motion to replenish?
Make a motion.
Second? Okay. Any questions from the public? No, John?
Brian wants to get his picture taken with the check.
Does he?
Oh, you're a spokesperson now? Wait, you have to be in charge of the calendar.
You're going to have to. All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and the chair votes aye. Motion carries four oh. And it's good to see the slabs are going to be coming out very soon.
Boy, that money went fast.
Sure it does. Okay. Tom?
Nope.
Go ahead.
I'm done, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, you're up.
And I'm back. All right, so at the, a couple of meetings ago, I can't remember which one, we had a representative from the Portnoy Law Firm was here. I can't remember his name either. But he wanted to explain why they kept asking us to adopt an ordinance. And he explained it and then following that, we talked about briefly how we wanted to proceed. And the next step from the board was, let's, let's, let's see what the ordinance actually says before we consider adoption. So we have it tonight. And basically what it is, is it does two things, it seems to me. It, it sets forth a fee schedule that Portnoy will use to collect delinquent property tax bills, trash bills, streetlight bills, based on what they need to do to collect it. They need to write a letter, it's, you know, the fee schedule's there, it's 10 bucks. If they need to, you know, do something at the farther end of the scale to get the result they need, it goes up a couple, a couple bucks. And additionally, the, it also requires, they, they strongly believe that it requires, thank you, sir, that they can't take any action under the statute until we, as a township approve at a meeting of the governing body, specifically an ordinance that lets them do that. So what, with the board's permission, what I want to do is put this on the May agenda for adoption. Unless there's something in the ordinance that you think needs further clarification, further discussion, but it really just establishes a fee schedule.
My question is that when we hired these guys, they had a fee schedule. So what happened to that?
So that, that was part of what he was sort of trying to explain. The, the fee schedule is actually established by statute. And my understanding is that fee schedule in the statute has changed, so we therefore have to change our fee schedule to meet that. And if I, if I remember what he said correctly, it was actually included some lessening of fees or making additional steps in the process so you don't get to those escalated activities as quick. Yes.
So this is an act that.
Yes.
So we're required to.
If we are.
Pro in ordinance?
If we are to collect things under the statute, the Municipal Claims and Tax Lean Act, we would have to adopt the fee schedule. In their case, because we have an outside agency doing it, that's why we do it via ordinance.
Okay.
So this is just the new schedule, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Any objections?
No.
Okay.
So we will advertise it then as drafted and we'll get it on the agenda for the May 4th meeting.
Okay.
Giving away the idea that I want to ask you not to have another meeting in April, but.
You can, you can certainly ask that.
It's coming up.
Item 11, getting there.
It's coming up. There's, is, before I hand it off to the solicitors, there's one other thing I just wanted to mention in that we are going to be discussing something under the engineers report that pretty much touches on the engineers office, my office, police department, Public Works, so.
I have a question that pertains to that, yes.
Okay. But for now, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Until number 11, correct?
No, 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 what is that?
Till number 10.
He says number 10.
That's right, number 10. Okay.
There's two blanks there, number 10.
Yeah, I know, I see that, but there won't be.
Yeah, I just have one update. I believe it was at our last meeting, you did the conditional approvals subject to the responsible contractor reviews for the paving and curb around, curb around contracts, or was that two months ago? Either way, we've completed the reviews, our office, Craig's office, those contracts have been awarded. have been awarded. It was NJS Concrete again for the curb ramps and James D. Morrissey for the paving.
Okay.
They both satisfied the requirements of the responsible contractor ordinance, and they'll be moving forward. I believe Aaron had said, we're looking for a May start date.
Okay.
Or at least that's the earliest they can start.
Do we have the road, the paving schedules on our website? Yet?
I don't believe all the dates have been set. I believe just May is the first they'll be able to start working, so they're working out those actual schedules.
We, we put some stuff on when it was adopted by the board. We put the, we recently put on the the items that the statute requires. The law requires to have public, public notice for a couple of days. We're gonna try to get the ad in the newspaper on, on the township engineer's schedule, if, if we could do that. And as instructed by the township engineer's office. So hopefully everything will stay on course
You're up, Craig. You lost me there, Scott.
I got a little lost too.
We were instructed to run the ad in the paper
Oh, we skipped that.
after reading an earlier email that said you guys were gonna do it, but it's all right, we're all on the same team.
Everything's taken care of there. All right, let's get back to my original question. At some point, we are going to put the road paving schedule on the, on the website, correct?
Right, I'm sorry, yeah.
Perfect.
We're gonna put on the, the dates, locations, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure it's all very accessible.
And you know, and the, these guys have been doing our work for us now for
Third year.
Yes, it's been a third year, you have the same. And they do a great job, I know.
Same for both.
Morrissey's, Tim, if you're out there listening, or Dalton, you know how fast they move, so are you ready?
They move and they shake.
Yes, they do. They'll bring their A-team. They'll bring their A-team as they always do.
Can I just add a note that people have, some people, a couple of women have said that they hate our roads, they hate Street Road, they hate York Road, Eastern Road, because of the white lines that are fading, and they can't see in the rain and things like that. So
They should speak to Penda, because they're not our roads.
I spoke to Penda.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Great, Judy, go ahead.
Next, at this spring, they're starting a new line where they're gonna paint all their lines on all their roads yellow.
Okay.
All right.
Very nice.
It's nice to know.
Thanks for, thanks for checking that out. I appreciate that.
I called and asked if they could put the metallic paint like they use in the south. When you're in Texas, all the street lines have metallic at night, so you can see the lines. And when it's raining, you can see the lines. It's nice. So hopefully that'll happen too, but we'll see.
Most they're going to do is go yellow right now.
Listen, if we can get them to paint them, that's good.
Well, yeah.
That's a step in the right direction.
I just came back, I just came back from a soccer tournament in Baltimore, and when you change the line from Maryland to Pennsylvania
It's a free-for-all?
You know where, you know where the line is because of where the road changes.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Craig.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have our April engineers report. Jumping back to the road program, where I thought Tom was gonna go was the pre-construction means are scheduled for next Tuesday.
Okay.
So once we have, and Aaron will be handling that, along with Michael, both the curb ramp and the paving are in the same day here at the township building, so once that's all worked out, I'm sure information will be presented and put on your website once we get that for everybody. So
Okay.
pre-con means are next week on that. Mr. Scott also alluded to, and I think it's on the agenda, we were directed to look based, and I think this is an ongoing issue, some complaints at Centennial Road and Revolutionary Way
Yes.
And I'm not even going to talk about, I think, obviously there's speeding, rolling stops, I'm not sure what else.
I'm across the street.
I
I scream at these people all day.
So I, I believe staffs on, along with the chief, Public Works, Mr. Scott, myself, my staff, we're on the same page there. So our traffic engineers went out, did preliminary investigation at Centennial and Revolutionary. We got that report to Mr. Scott. We are recommend, and again, I think this is more of just an update. We'll have more action items for you in next month. We also then went and looked at Centennial Road and Hancock, and we also recommend an always stop there as well. So you're gonna do one intersection, I recommend you do both. We actually looked at site distance. There's some recommendations we'll provide. It's not whether or not it's in the right of way or not, or whether we need to knock on some doors, but there's some landscaping and, and site visibility, especially on the second intersection, so
Right.
Both reports recommend the same.
Oh, I agree. And I, yeah, and I, I did receive quite a few phone calls from folks that said, I almost got hit. You know, at Centennial Revolutionary, because these people don't stop at the stop signs. It's craziness. So thank you for, and whatever you can do to help out in that situation before somebody gets
I think there's, there's
There's some preliminary things we can do first.
Yeah, there's some preliminary things. Even before the stop signs, you could have a little, I think, maybe Ken wants to talk about that. You could add little signs underneath the stop sign.
I love them.
There, you know, stop, stopping is free.
Full stops free. What's that? The rolling stops, $250?
Wherever you
Not here, right?
$125. That's $125.
$128, right.
Honestly, Ms. Pelles have put that up. We have several in the area. Ken knew about it.
I love that sign.
And, and it works.
You can also
Especially when there's an officer sitting there at the stop sign, yeah.
You can also, I don't know, I haven't talked to the chief directly, I know Aaron's been working with him. We can, obviously there's increased police enforcement, but also there's other options as far as radar signs. I don't know if you've really been, some townships now have been purchasing the, the signs. You know, they flash when you go by the speedway.
Right.
But those are more speeding in the stretches, not at the stop signs, so. But again, if you start showing that, that activity at that intersection or that road, you know, it does slow down, but then as soon as that goes away, so the stop signs will, will help with that. You still need to enforce it. Both intersections are the same recommendations, and at some point, we'll have an action item for you in an upcoming meeting. But we're wrapping all those up. One's done, the other one's ready to go. They look very identical.
I believe there was another thing we were talking about too, because people see that traffic light down there, Street Road, or I mean, County Line, correct?
As punishment tonight, I had to do all this because I did not attend the meeting last week with Mr. Scott, and he said, you're gonna do all the presentations. So I heard that our traffic engineer recommending working with that light, which I think is another great improvement to put the shield on, so you can't see the green, so they're just not baffles.
Right.
So there's a couple of things we can do.
I thought you were at that meeting.
What?
I was there. You weren't there?
No.
I thought you were. I'm losing my mind.
The traffic, you weren't there either.
No, 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 that was, that was Landville.
That was Landville.
Aaron, but, yeah, Aaron came up.
We do be outside of
You do? It's good to know.
So we have, we have we have several recommendations, and we'll prioritize them and have some action items for you in next month or the following month's meeting.
All right, well, there you go, Kath, and I know Mark was concerned about that as well.
I've already got that call as well.
Okay.
So we can noodle with the stop signs, with more stop signs or brighter stop signs, or put the, put the, put the baffle, the blockers on the, on the street, on the traffic signal. Things we can do to encourage people to obey the stop sign there.
I'll tell you what, there's, there's a, on my way to my daughter's house in Blueville, I can't remember the name of the road, but it's a very, very heavily traveled road. And there's a one intersection where it's a three-way stop sign, it's a T-intersection, and there's a lot of traffic on this road, and they put those free, you know, full stop, free, rolling stop, and on occasion, more than not, there's a police officer there. And so now I've been through there for the last couple of months, there's not, there's not an officer there. Everybody stops. So maybe that's what we need.
I also wanted to mention too, my, one of my major concerns is when the high school gets out, does the kids come down that street and they fly? So there's a lot of traffic.
And that's a blind corner there.
Right, it's a blind, right, it's a blind corner, and you know how the kids drive, so I don't know what turns we're gonna
I don't know if it's just kids anymore.
Yeah, I don't know.
So we
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was gonna respond to her comment. Is there, are we able to put another speed hump further up the hill, so it slows them down on the way down?
So that would be like phase three or four, and I didn't wanna get into that tonight, but traffic calming has not been done in the past year, and I, I think we got a whole discussion on that, so I chose not to bring it up, but
Okay.
our engineers do recommend that could be, you know, your third or fourth. I think that's a larger discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry, Rob. Thanks.
No, that's fine.
So we have rubble strips or something, that we break, we'd be breaking new ground, we're plowing new ground with streets.
I just, they start at the top of the hill and see how fast they can get by the bottom of the hill.
I believe in the 15 years I've been here, we have not done traffic. Even your traffic engineer, if I wasn't, did not do traffic calming. Now, players change, you know,
Yeah.
staff changes, so that's, that's, we can have that discussion.
Okay.
Well, since it's the new traffic engineer, I wanna give him something to do.
Could we have him make those signs for Norwood and Lemon, and there's a couple other stop signs in Speedway I know that would benefit from that stop sign sign?
Mr. Chairman, I have one other thing
Fill it, take it, fill it to a service.
Certainly.
Go ahead.
That's another big one. We've been working with Public Works, Aaron and Andrew, and our environmental staff on the Public Works above-ground storage tanks. That turned into some repairs into it looks like we're gonna be replacing pumps, and the cost has gone up a little bit, so we were getting ready to go out to bid. We've been working with Mr. Scott on that. I think that's just gonna be bid next, or advertised next week.
It's advertised on Tuesday, Saturday.
So next week it'll be advertised. We'll see what kind of bids we get. Just to point out, the estimated construction cost is around $168,000, with total cost to be about $192,000. $30,000 is for replacing the pumps versus repairing them. Andrew fell strong about that. I believe he stopped, talked to Tom. We support that as well. So that, each pump's about $15,000. And then to run new lines, instead of trying to repair lines, unfortunately, that's upwards of $45,000 for that. So that's about $75,000 of the total. But instead of doing repairs and doing them again, I think this is coming out of the ARBO funds for that. So we'll see where the bids come in, and you'll can decide
Right.
if it's a viable project, as far as where the funds come from. But that is gonna be advertised next week.
So that's to remove the underground piping and that pit that was leaking, right?
Yeah, we did the investigation.
Yeah, you went through the whole soil investigation?
Yes, we have all that. I'm just wanting to advise you that it's going out
Okay.
for advertisement next week.
All right.
And that's all I have.
Something that needs to get done. Thank you, thank you, Craig. All right. Tom, I think you're up again.
Great, thank you, sir. First off, I just wanna announce that the offices of the township will be closed tomorrow for the holiday. And I, I should have checked to see what the library schedule is, but I didn't. So I apologize for that.
It's okay.
I am recommending, Mr. Chairman, based on the items that we've discussed tonight and have talked about, should be at that, discussed at the next meeting, that we set that next meeting for the first Thursday in the month of May, which would be May the 4th, 2023.
Any objections?
None.
None.
No objections.
And as a corollary, we officially cancel the meeting that is scheduled for April the 20th.
Yes.
Yes.
No objections.
Thank you.
Okay.
That is all I have. Thank you.
Round two, public comment. Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Faris, 948 Cornell Drive. I just wanted to invite everybody to the next Environmental Advisor Council meeting. We're hosting the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, and they're gonna be presenting a talk entitled Stormwater 101. It's a, it's a very important topic that everybody in this township already knows about. I mean, we have the whole stormwater issue, we're, we're changing things. But more importantly, show up at the meeting, you're eligible for a stormwater credit.
Oh, no kidding?
Yes, so
A stormwater
you're literally will get paid to attend the meeting.
I was planning on attending anyway, Mike.
I, I attend them.
And I know Dalton, Dalton George will be there as well.
Yeah, and it, it sounds like it's gonna be a pretty interesting discussion there, so
We hope so.
We're inviting everybody in the township to show up and make a little money in the process, so
That's nice.
I get credit on your bill.
April 24th?
Seven o'clock in this room. That's the, it's the fourth Monday of every month, and it's the fourth Monday of this month. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mike. John? No? You got, okay. Excellent, I got it.
You have important things to discuss?
All right, supervisors' comments. Do you wanna go, Kath?
All right, I don't care.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I'd like there's our check.
I would like to wish everybody happy holiday, and I'm sure a lot of folks know that it's really unusual this year that you've got multiple religions having their holidays this, this week. So regardless of, of what you practice, I wish you Happy Easter, Passover, or whatever, whatever you do celebrate. And Happy Easter, everyone. Have, have fun with your Easter egg hunts with your grandkids, kids, whatever. And see you next time, next meeting. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Judy, we'll just go right down the line there.
Okay, I wanted to finish up library comments because I didn't finish before, because I didn't wanna give you too much at once. But
Lots to handle.
I understand that the architectural plans for the restroom renovation are complete, and the architect is currently preparing bid specs.
Correct.
And the renovation's gonna include an ADA restroom, a nursing room, and two private study rooms. It's gonna be really nice. It's gonna be really nice, you know.
And some, and some rudimentary work to the existing bathrooms to make them a little more pleasant.
Yeah. And they are continuing the outreach efforts to different places, and right now they have brought library services and outreach to seven locations in the community in March. They went to play and learn preschool, Montessori's Children's House, St. Paul's Preschool, Vida Family Services, McDonald Elementary School, Christ Home Independent Living, and Ben Wilson Center. So they are really making the rounds, trying to show people what they can do with the library, and what's available, and how to use it, and how to get online with it, and get people to sign up for library cards.